Good evening and welcome to the October 7, 2024, meeting of the Akron Public School Board. Thank you for joining us. Roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Present.
Ms. Autry.
Present.
Ms. Hall.
Present.
Ms. Jackson.
Present.
Dr. Molinar.
Present.
Mrs. Sykes.
Present.
Six present, zero absent.
Thank you very much. Please stand if you're able for the pleasure of allegiance. Vice President Jackson, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first order of business and a point of privilege, I would like to move to amend the board agenda to include a resolution 24-146, a resolution proclaiming for the progress of the Akron Public School District and congratulating scholars, staff, and the superintendent on their accomplishments as this item is number, agenda item 30.1. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Dr. Molinar.
Sorry, I am just seeing this for the first time. I'm still reading it. Can you come back to me?
I certainly will. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
I'll, I'll just abstain since you're waiting, or waiting for me. I, I will read this, but I did not hear of this until we sat down, and I checked this at 5 o'clock today.
Completed. So we have five approved, five to zero with one abstention.
Thank you. So that item is under 30.1 new business, and we will revisit it at that time. Next, we have recognitions. Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Autry. Thank you, President Autry. I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of one of our awesome community members who approached me about an item that he and his company would like to place at Resnick CLC. He had the opportunity to actually go to school with Mrs. Resnick. Is Mr. Temerios present with us?
I'm sorry, due to some last minute scheduling conflicts, he is unable to be present.
Okay. Yes, you can. Yes.
So Mr. Paul Temario from the Temario Construction Company had approached Dr. Robinson earlier in the year to discuss a rocket ship memorial to be placed in front of Resnick close to market for all of the community to be able to see, as well as all the students to be able to see in memory of his classmate from Firestone and friend to hope to inspire at least one child to go into space exploration as they move forward. Part of that commemoration would also include a bronze statue in the likeness of Judith Resnick, as well as a bronze statue in the likeness of Jean Hickson, who was a teacher at Forest Hill Elementary at the time. She was the second woman to break the sound barrier. She was a teacher of his, and he wanted to include, include her in that memorial as well. He graduated from Akron Schools, went up through Akron Schools as a, his parents immigrated from Greece, and through Akron Schools was that he got a lot of assistance in being able to learn English and matriculate through the school system and then take over, as he was in adulthood, take over his father's construction business, which now brings in an annual revenue of over $200 million. So a very successful local company from a very successful gentleman that came through Akron Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan, and also, and it was really great talking with Mr. Temerios in my office, but he and I had also had a conversation prior to, earlier during the school year when I had a chance to meet him, and I met him again at another meeting. And so he has a lot of history and is very passionate about the work that he does each and every day and was, and is very passionate about this particular project. So this project is something that I would be asking for approval from the board. It, it is not going to be a cost to this district. He's funding the entire thing. He just, I would just be asking for permission for that to be placed there in hopes that it would motivate our scholars throughout our city to go and see it. And the funny thing, funniest thing is, I had the opportunity to lead a school where Krista McCullough was one of the teachers who was in space with Mrs. Resnick, and then I had the opportunity to teach at one of the schools in Fulton County, Georgia, that Mr. Ronald McDonald McNair, and I got a chance to meet his family, actually was on that same spaceship when it, it exploded. And so it's just ironic that it would be a full circle to come here. But we also have the maple trees that are being donated to the district.
Yes, and like Mr. Temerios, any representative from Keep Akron Beautiful were not able to be present due to last minute scheduling conflicts as well. They had approached me earlier in the summer with the possibility of donating 20 Sunset Red Maple Trees to be installed at CLCs within the district, particularly ones in neighborhoods that did not have a lot of tree canopy coverage, as explained through them, as has been talked about in many studies, that more tree coverage, more shade coverage in urban communities has a multitude of positive health outcomes and as well as beautification of those areas. They would be working closely with our grounds maintenance department to do the installation of the trees if the donation is accepted, and that, as far as, that's as far as it would go is their involvement, is the donation of and assisting in the installation of the trees.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Again, board members, that is in communications section, but it would need your approval.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So item 2.1 is for the Rocket Memorial, two statues for Resnick CLC. Is there a motion to accept this donation from Rocket Memorial?
I make a motion.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Jackson. Is there any discussion, Member Hall?
I would just like, thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say, I think this is a wonderful opportunity from Mr. Temerios. I learned about it because he thought it was something else, but it's Akron Public Schools owned, and no, no money's coming out of general fund. And I think, I will be voting yes, but I would just say, you know, when you start giving people their flowers while they're here, I feel like I'm a Carla right now saying that. But, you know, give people their flowers while they're here versus when they're gone, then we want to give memorials and plaques and things like that. So I think this is a great opportunity for APS.
Thank you, Member Hall. Any other discussion? I would just like to also thank Mr. Temerios and Rocket Memorial for giving back, and it's nice just to see one of our own come back and inspire future astronauts. Seeing no further discussion, Dr. Thompson, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molinar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Next is item 2.2 for the maple trees from Keep Akron Beautiful. Is there a motion to accept the donation?
Some of.
It's been moved by Vice President Jackson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molinar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Motion carries six oh.
Thank you. Next is item 2.3. Dr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you, President Autry. Dr. Halasa?
Thank you, President Autry, Superintendent Dr. Robinson, board, excuse me, board members, and our treasurer, Dr. Thompson. Thank you for being here tonight to allow us to celebrate an incredible milestone in our community commitment to our children. As there, as a saying says, "It takes a whole village to raise a child." And this is a belief that driven us to create this meaningful partnership that enrich the lives of our kindergarten scholars. We are proud to mark our five-year success since the inception of the Safety Town in 2019. This initiative exemplifies our dedication to providing every child in our district with vital safety education in a fun and engaging way. We are the only district in the state of Ohio to incorporate this into our curriculum. Normally, children get this during the summer, and it might be 200 to 300 students that engage in this process. But we here are reaching 14,000 students every year. Another really positive attribute of this is that people are contacting our community members, both the police and the fire, to inquire how to replicate this model here. I would like to turn it to our full-time coordinator, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Charles Jones, coordinator of Safety Town. Our Safety Town begins with an email sent to principals, secretaries, custodian, and teachers, as well as parents describing this exciting day for all of our students. So after we get the email out, then our exciting day begins with our buildings and grounds.
As the buildings and grounds, we move the trailer daily to the selected school for the program for that day.
One of our lessons from Akron Fire that we teach all of the kindergarteners is stop, drop, and roll, and cover your faces. We want them to know what to do in the event there's a fire in their family and their homes, so that they can safely get out and get the fire off of their clothes, so that they can survive.
Then the nurses from Akron Children's, the clinical coordinators of the elementary schools come in, and we have partnered with Akron Public since 2006 in teaching a poison and washing their hands program. So they watch a video that's called Stop, Ask First. Not only does it highlight poisonous materials that may come across in the community and at home, but also we can discuss who are good trusted adults that they can talk to of if an item is safe or not. At the end of the program, we hand out a coloring sheet they can go home with, and often some stickers or a magnet as well. And then we go over the proper way to wash their hands.
One of the most important lessons that we follow up with is taking out our fire safety smoke trailer to all of the students. We provide permission slips so that the children can crawl through non-toxic, non-poisonous smoke and actually fill the simulation of what it might be with a fire without the heat, without the danger. Our partnership with Akron Fire and Akron Public Schools has gone on for more than 40 years, just teaching safety to all of our students, and we really appreciate the collaboration.
Peterman just recently joined us on board. Normally, we would use our APS, but due to the limit of people that could support, Peterman stepped up last year, and they have been teaching the lessons on the respect on a safety bus, as well as teaching our students how to even evacuate in case there's an emergency.
I'm Officer Naco for the Akron Police Department. I'm one of the educators at Safety Town. After lunch, the Akron Police bring in their canine officers and handlers to teach about canine safety. The students learn how to be safe and interact around dogs. They also learn how to ask permission to pet a dog and how to avoid being bitten. We move on to stranger danger next. So we teach students about stranger danger. They learn what to do if a stranger attempts to harm them. They finish the lesson by practicing their skills and telling a trusted adult about the bad strangers.
Through song, through song, entertainment, and practice, we teach our kindergarten scholars the rules of crossing the street, whether they are with older adults, crossing guard, or independently if needed.
Through through a generous donation from the Goodyear Foundation, Akron Children's has been able to give over 7,400 helmets since 2019.
And finally, wrapping up the day, we turn to gun safety. The Akron Police wrap up the day by teaching gun safety to our students. Our students learn about the dangers of gun and how to tell an adult about a found gun. They also learn that toy guns can be just as dangerous as real guns.
And finally, what you will see is that our Firestone Art Department, many years ago when we first started, actually created an activity book called The Great Safety Adventure, and it goes home with each of our scholars, and there are questions that they can be asked with their families and questions that, and facts that their families can share. We thank you for this evening to have this opportunity to share with you. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make sure there aren't any questions from board members. Vice President Jackson.
I think this is a wonderful program. Again, Dr. Halasa, you know, I love you. You do great work here in the district, and anything you partner with is excellence in motion. Thank you all for your work and your support. I've actually had the privilege to see Safety Town in action and at work, and learners really loving it and engaging with it. So kudos to you all. And for Akron Fire, it's so funny when she said, "We've been partnering with Akron Public 40 years," because as she was talking about the stop, drop, and roll, I remember being at Rankin Elementary and the fire department coming in and talking to us about that. So it really is a great, great partnership. But lastly, my question is, I'm with the gun safety. Now, this is all for the littles, this program. And I'm curious, and I remember a couple months ago, we had the issue that happened with the young man in Goodyear Heights who was shot by the police, and we were wondering what, how, how can we get more information as far as, I love how you said, Officer, that toy guns are dangerous as well, can be dangerous. And I'm just wondering about programming, gun safety and informational programming that we can use throughout, like for the different levels. Is there anything in the talks about that?
So just to add on to that, there is a K, we're doing a pipeline with the Red Cross and some other things that we have partnerships with that address kind of home, safe home with our children's hospital. So we are making a pipeline of different things that are, we're trying to touch base with each of our learners at different levels. So they're all in the works. They're just maybe not at the level we're at, at this point. But I would turn to my partner, Officer Naco.
Thank you.
Yes, like Dr. Halasa said, we, we have a pipeline, and we would like to eventually get into the middle schools and possibly the high schools for those ninth graders and start educating on the, the more advanced steps on those programs, because obviously stranger danger turns into online danger and the possibilities of being kidnapped or being involved in human trafficking. Gun safety obviously turns into their desire to want to touch a gun or utilize a gun to resolve issues or conflict. We would like to get into the middle schools as well and start educating on the dangers of that from that perspective, from that teen perspective.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Molinar?
Thank you. I also love Safety Town. My kids went through Safety Town, and the first thing they did when they came home was, we had to come up with our fire and practice, our fire evacuation plan. So I hope every student went home and did that exercise with their families, too, because it's really effective. And I also liked to hear the possibility of something like a middle school Safety Town, or a high school Safety Town, or a teenage Safety Town, you know. And whenever I hear Safety Town, I think of our littles, and we're doing such a great job with our littles. But like you said, stranger danger, online internet safety, I think, I think I might have some parents that also would benefit from internet safety tips. And so I, I'd love to see how that grows. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you to this amazing array of partners for pouring into our children. And I don't want it to be lost that we are the only district, you said, in the state who has this as part of our curriculum. So I think that's an amazing thing that we should be proud of, and just another value that we offer. Thank you.
And I have Mary Ottley to thank for that, because she approached me five years ago with this.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda are board member reflections. Do we have any board member reflections? Vice President Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. And also, just part of my reflection, what I would like to talk about, when you talk about the maple trees, planting the maple trees, I'm not familiar. I want so deeply to be a gardener and just be great in that area, but you know, that was not my giftedness. I am working on it. So I'm not familiar with Sunset Maple Trees. Are they the type that you can tap for maple syrup, or no? If no, okay, we're moving on, because I was going to say for the entrepreneur part, maybe we can tap it and sell maple syrup, but. But okay, now I'm moving on. So I had the pleasure, since the last time we met, just actually yesterday evening, to go and tour with the community members at North High School as I walked through and talked to them. And I was so happy to see members of Stan Hewitt because I know Stan Hewitt just had the, is having, was having the Ohio Mark going on. And so some had their shirts on. And I thought, how cool is that? That they are taking the time to come and look through North. And I also had the pleasure to talk to different individuals. Many of my board colleagues were there, members from central office, community member. Carla Chapman is doing a fantastic job, as well as our very own Ms. Sykes. But I thought what was really cool about it, I met a person who, I met a couple people who attended North, and one was a man by the name of Eric Monday. And I said, he could have been the tour guide because he knew what was, what was different, the changes that was made. And he was very excited, and he was walking through, and I felt very informed. And as I was going through and I was looking at all the memorabilia in the school, and I thought, you know, after the levy passes and we build a new school, what becomes of all this memorabilia, right? And how is it, is it reorganized to be a part of this new school's history of what was or what becomes of that? Then I thought about all the other schools that have been rebuilt, right, and had memorabilia. And I just wondered, where is all this history? And how does it become a part of other buildings? So that is just a question that I want to posit. These buildings that have been closed and then rebuilt, where is the history? Because North has so much history. It was like articles of people who wrote articles. They had a paper at North. I didn't even know North had a bakery at some point. I knew about the restaurant, but they had a bakery. And actually, one of the brownies, I forgot the name of the brownie. Someone watching will know. They end up selling them at the West Side Market until the West Side Market closed. It was like a teacher, the culinary arts teacher created this. It had a funny name of a brownie, and they sold it at the West Side Market. So I just think that was really cool. Lastly, I met a woman whose grandmother graduated from North in 1933. And this woman, we connected her with Yamini, I think it's some people. And she said that she had, well, she's supposed to connect with Yamini. Mike was there as well. You look shocked, Yamini. But she said that she had photos and her grandmother's letterman and pictures of teachers from the '30s and information that she would love to bless the district with to maybe be in the schools because it's part of the history. And I thought that was great. And so it was a wonderful event. I'm so happy to see the community is with us, and I just want to thank the community for their support. Blessings.
Thank you, Vice President Jackson. Any other community reflections? Member Hall.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, Carla, I think they're the killer brownies.
Thank you. Any, Dr. Molnar?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm, in my three minutes, I'm really going to try to get through Community Learning Centers, Part Two, because I think community members, when I'm going around hearing about the levy, people want to know, what are you doing with these community learning centers? That's what we were promising people was community learning centers. And I went to first a combined cornerstone meeting open to the community over Cornerstones 1 and 4. And Ms. Autumn Reynolds and Ms. Stancy Sykes was telling us all about the progress in our Family Resource Centers inside of our CLCs. And I also visited Helen Arnold, one of our buildings with a very, very productive and active and beneficial Family Resource Center. So I want to spend my next two minutes here really focusing on Helen Arnold and the FRCs because I had the pleasure to see in action the woman behind the presence that is Principal LaMonica Davis because she is such a humble leader. And it was so amazing to see her in action, to see the building happening, everything in the building, and just really modeling a culture of being, the love and the light in the building. And every time I asked her how something happened, she would refer me to someone else and refer me to someone else and refer me to someone else, even though she was that connective tissue. She was that glue, building that, keeping that building together. So one of the things that I really saw from that and saw from her leadership and her management style was she was also a role model to everyone in that building about giving the help, but also receiving help and asking for help. And that is a life skill that is really bridging everything together. There's a whole page here that she said, Helen Arnold, who are we? And on this list is just a list of the helpers, the people that are here to support the whole child and the progress for the whole child and the whole building. And when you walk around that building, everyone understands. Everyone knows that mission. I was walking around, I had two great student ambassadors, Charlie and Jakely, and they showed me everything. But then we got to the book vending machine, and the security guard was there to explain to me the PBIS mission of the book vending machine. And the foster grandpa was there to bring the building together. And it was just the love and the light, and everyone knew their greater purpose of these kids. And so now I have 19 seconds to talk about the academics, which I skipped a whole bunch of stuff to get to it. But excellence there. I sat into a first grade gifted STEM lesson right there. Most buildings in the state of Ohio do not offer gifted to first graders. It's early to identify a first grader for gifted. So the whole class got that gifted experiment, and they were engaged. They had the goggles on. They had the gloves on. It was there. And so kudos, kudos to Helen Arnold, our FRCs, all of our partners. And if anybody wants a story on community learning centers, there's a direction.
Thank you, Dr. Molnar. Mr. Alexander?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I went to a couple of different events this past week, and they, all of them were really nice. I want to start out with the Summit, I'm sorry, the Akron Public Schools Hall of Fame. We had some outstanding individuals get placed in the Athletic Hall of Fame. There were about, there were three women who really shined and did a really good job and have a lot of records that they've broken. I don't think there's going to be too many to break those records. But these young ladies were very good. We had a number of young men and several of our coaches as well. The event was put together really well. Joe Vassalotti and his team did a very good job. So I want to say congratulations to him and also congratulations to the inductees because the inductees were there, they spoke well. Some of them spoke a little too long, but they did speak well. So I want to congratulate them. The other is I went to, I Promise the other morning, and I went there to meet our trainer, presenter, Deborah Keys. And when I got there, I didn't know I was going to be there for an event that they were having. It was so exciting. It got me so hyped up for the day. I was kind of down. I'd been feeling tired and all. But when I went there and that energy they had that morning with the staff, meeting the kids at the front, the kids going in there, the excitement of the kids, it had me going. And these, the kids, they came outside, and there were houses they were going in. The houses were different colors. And the different colored houses, they had the different colored shirts, and they had a competition. So they had to learn something from each one of these houses. They had a lot of academic enrichment going on. And so it was very, very exciting to me. I love that because when I see kids being happy and see kids learning, it makes me really, really happy. So I want to thank the I Promise staff, Mrs. Davis, and the foundation, the Bron James Family Foundation, for all that they're doing for our kids there because they do a whole lot. And what they do for those kids is for the kids, and that's the most important thing. They're doing it for the kids. So I appreciate that and thank them for doing what they're doing. And the last thing is I went to Ohio School Board Association Northeast Region Fall Conference. There were about 160 people there, and they included superintendents, board members, and teachers who were, who came just for that event. And there were a number of awards that were given out to different ones there. It was really well-attended. The food was good. And it did a lot of good things that are going on in the state of Ohio, not like Akron Public Schools, but they're doing some good things. Akron Public Schools is number one. And this also, this is the organization where I was the president this past year. That was my last meeting. So my job is done. I can move on and come back and put more time here at Akron Public Schools. But the event was really nice. And Dr. Molnar was there as well to represent Akron Public Schools. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any other reflections?
So I'd just like to share that since we last met, I had the opportunity to visit, attend Love Akron Breakfast. And it is just an amazing event. It's an annual event. But I was really proud to see that our students were honored. The East Locker Room Experience Team were honored as the students there that evening or that afternoon for their attendance initiatives. And so, but all of our students there were, excuse me, all of our students were there from all of our schools. And to see our East CLC Locker Room Experience Honor was really nice. Also, since we last met, I was able to attend Jennings CLC for the ribbon cutting of their Makerspace. Thank you to the Cleveland Cavaliers and Goodyear for their contributions and making that happen. The students were amazing there. I got to try out a lot of different things. But they have 3D printers. They have a green room, virtual reality, which I tried. They said that it helps you tackle your fears. So I tried it, and I was underwater, and I had fish and whales all around me. But the students shared that it helps them with their writing. And so it's a tool that they use there. They have sewing machines and just a lot of amazing things there. The students were really engaged. And again, we have amazing partners who made that happen. And I believe that all of our middle school LRCs are Makerspaces now. This was our last one. I know it was delayed because of COVID. So thanks again to the Cleveland Cavaliers. The energy was amazing there. They had the drummers that you see usually at halftime for the Cavs and the dancers. And so again, thank you. And then lastly, I just want to share about a tradition over in West Akron called the Banner Program, started about seven years ago by the PTA over there. And it was started because members of that community just were growing frustrated with the negative media attention that they were getting that didn't even relate to the school. So that PTA came together and created this banner program in which our senior students there are honored, and they have a big banner that we put out on the poles on Copley Road. You can see them now. But I remember the very first year we did it, and we're there early in the morning, and the kids are scrambling because they want to get a certain pole on a certain street. And people are driving by, what are these kids up to now? What are they doing? But now, seven years later, when these students are standing by their banner, you're hearing the car horns beep. Congratulations, way to go. And the students, you know, are so proud, and the school and the community is so proud because they have so much to offer. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that program because it was grassroots by the community, and those students definitely deserve to be honored. And so that concludes my community reflection. Next, we have a few requests to address the board. And so we will start off with Reverend Curtis Walker. As you make your way up here, I am quite sure you are aware of our regulations and rules around public address, but I will read them so the ones who come behind you are aware. Participants will not be permitted to speak on matters related to vendors, business matters, formal complaints, grievances, specific student or student records, personnel matters, and potential or pending legal matters. Participants must speak on matters related to the business of the board. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. The board will not respond, but will assign through the superintendent the appropriate person for a follow-up. Please state your name and group affiliation.
My name is Curtis T. Walker, Senior. I am a parent, grandparent of a fourth grader at KCLC and a proud APS former board member of 20 years. And I'm here to speak on the topic of the levy. Several months ago, I came and encouraged the board to move forward with a levy, and now it's upon us. The levy number is Levy Issue 27. And I would want to thank our superintendent, Dr. Robinson, our treasurer, Dr. Thompson. Want to thank our president, Deanna Audrey, our vice president, Carla Jackson, and the outstanding members of the Akron School Board. I particularly want to thank the Citizens Committee, excuse me, Citizens Committee, beginning with Carla Chapman and then with Adam. That's not, I don't see him present, but surely we are grateful for them. And a board member, Barbara Sykes. In years past, to even begin to think about running a campaign, you needed hundreds of thousands of dollars. This committee has moved with minimum amounts of money to do an outstanding job already, to do the work that they have done. I just received in the mail a placard, a card, advertising what this board is about and what we're trying to do. We've got all kinds of distractions. I could spend all night if I had the time talking about negativity, but I'm not about negativity. What I'm about is encouraging us to support this school board, to support this superintendent, to support this treasurer, to support the Citizens Committee, and moving forward. Tomorrow begins early voting. And I encourage those who are listening and sharing to go out and vote in favor of Issue 27. I had on my phone, and I have to blame our technology. It's difficult to tap into, but that's done for security reasons. I understand that. But, and for those of us who are old enough, there was a show on television. Jack Webb was one of the key persons. It was called Dragnet. And one of the questions that he often said was, or was said to him, or he would say to individuals, just the facts. Show me just the fact. Fifty-two school buildings, over 20,000 students are being blessed by the work of the Akron School Board. We need to support them because if we don't in the last 20 seconds, we'll have to cut back, we'll have to minimize, we'll have to look at our staff. The treasurer is going to tell you in the next few days the October forecast that he has to share. And if we don't meet that, the negative things that will happen. Businesses, schools, homes benefit from Akron Public School. So we thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. This was a surprise because everything I came here to discuss, you shot it down. So I was coming to address the issue of special education and IEP programs. So I just wanted to address the board and challenge you guys to give me some information on who I need to talk to to find out why we, y'all have such a challenge with getting certified professional teachers to teach these kids. It's been really bad. This school been in just one month, and I've had five incidents with my child. They, it's a substitute. They had a perfect teacher last year. This year, they didn't even let us know that we didn't have a teacher. So I just wanted to get some understanding on this because I'm, you know, I got some frustrations. I got some questions. I can't reach nobody. It's a whole process. I just wanted to bring that to the board. So if somebody could just direct me in the right direction, I will start all over from the bottom and call the people I need to call. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ivy Anderson. So, Ivy and Stacy are the same?
No. I have to take one of you to talk.
Thank you. Next, we have Jackie Ridley. Good evening.
All right. I'm Dr. Jackie Ridley. I'm a former APS teacher and a mom of three APS students. I'm here today to express my urgent concern about the current state of the K-2 SAIL classroom at Resnick CLC, which is unfortunately negatively affecting my daughter Paisley and it sounds like maybe some others as well. I'm asking the board to take action to restore a safe and productive learning environment for Paisley and all the students in this classroom. SAIL stands for Students with Adapted Individualized Learning and is a self-contained classroom for students with mild to moderate disabilities. My daughter Paisley was placed in the SAIL classroom this past fall, according to her IEP, and we were hopeful for her progress, especially since our older daughter Patience was paced there last year and she thrived in this exact same classroom in school. Unfortunately, after five new students joined the classroom on the second day of school, the classroom has become chaotic and at times dangerous. Paisley has reported frequent incidents of violence, including students kicking, hitting, and throwing objects at peers, the teacher, and the other pair of professionals. She's been evacuated multiple times in the room and has told us she feels unsafe. Her teacher, Mrs. Villers, confirmed this chaos and confirmed Paisley received no core instruction and no intervention during this time. Ms. Villers even had to remove learning materials and books because they were being used as weapons in the classroom. Feeling overwhelmed and unsupported, Mrs. Villers went on leave. This teacher has spent 11 years teaching in multiple disabilities in the classroom and the last three at Resnick CLC. She's not unfamiliar with challenging behaviors and this classroom circumstance after five days drove her to the brink. In her absence, the classroom has had, has been in disarray and has a revolving door of substitutes, none of which have been intervention specialists. Paisley has purported watching movies in the classroom and regularly brings home busy work that do not align with her IEP goals. While there is now a kind and hardworking substitute in this room, he is not an intervention specialist. When we asked him this past Thursday at interim pickup about the curriculum he was using, he responded, "What curriculum?" He reported spending the bulk of his time in the day changing students' diapers, spoon feeding a child, and stopping students from running from the classroom. When we asked the principal and special education coordinator about Paisley's core instruction and her IEP support services, we were told all instruction has been delivered according to plan. We have requested documentation on this, but have not received anything to verify this. The situation is unacceptable. Given the purpose and the design of the SAIL program, there appears to either be an inappropriate placement of students, a lack of proper staffing, or probably something in between, and there appears to be no clear plan in place to resolve this issue. We've been told that other students, her educational plans are not our business. I respect this privacy and so, I respectfully ask you, whose right is it is to question the ethics and the appropriateness of these placements and what is happening in this classroom? And how do we resolve this, not only for my child, but her classrooms as well? Thank you.
Next, we will have our superintendent's report. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you, President Archery.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name on the sign-up list. Your name was not on the sign-up list. Please state your name and affiliation.
My name is James Jackson. I'm a 30-year veteran. I've taught in the Akron Public Schools for 30 years. I am also a parent. First, I want to say thank you to our superintendent. He was wonderful in handling our issue and Dr. Lash was wonderful and Mrs. Jawan Lane was wonderful at HIRE. I know some of you, I know Dr. Curtis. Speeches at graduation ceremony, I know, I worked with Bruce Alexander and our superintendent. I'm requesting a proposed change to the code of student behavior because I have a child that was a victim of the code of student behavior. I had no idea that it even could, it even could be possible. Started the thing so I can be within my time. My child brought a bag. He had, his brother and him have an identical bag. In his bag, his brother dropped, which he thought it was in his bag, a Boy Scout knife. This was the same day that another child threatened to shoot up the school at HIRE. This was the same day. Many parents were taking their kids out of school. So, I didn't mind having to take mine out, but mine was for an unusual reason. My child is in a gifted program, has won every award imaginable in elementary school and even the assistant principal wanted to cry. She said, "Because the way the law and the rules are written, it says possession, use of a dangerous weapon, look-alike weapon, poison, gas, other firearms possession of or about their person, locker, desk, book bags, et cetera." The way it was written, the principal acted to remove him from the school. So, this child is sitting in ISS, hyperventilating because he's never had a detention before, never done anything wrong before, and doesn't understand why he's in trouble because it wasn't his knife. I asked to speak to the principal. I was not granted that, but the assistant principal, she told me she wanted to cry because she said, "This is a gifted child. He's in a gifted program. He received a suspension for 10 days with the threat of expulsion." And just real quick, this doesn't make any sense. A little girl brings a knife to school to cut a birthday cake. She leaves the knife in her locker. Monday morning, a boy sees the knife in her locker and reports her and she's recommended for expulsion.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson.
Okay. But I just, I just wanted you to see this issue. So, I just want my child's record completely cleared, but I also want, I also want a change to this code of behavior and I'm just going to just tell you what the proposed change is.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Jackson. That is your time.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Next, we have our superintendent's report. Mr. Jackson, you make an email, you know, you have access to email the board and you can send those proposed changes, but I think the treasurer is about to speak to you.
Thank you. Thank you. God bless. Thank you, President Archery. Looking at the month of October, we have some national days, which we want to say thank you to our principals, our assistant principals, our deans, and we are going to be celebrating them very soon. To our custodians, thank you so much. We did send something out thanking them for the work that they do. It is a, it's a lot of tedious work, but they are moving to get our buildings clean and up and running. World Teachers Day, which on October the 5th, which certainly we want to say thank you to all of our teachers for the great work that they do each and every day. It is not easy work, but we thank them for continuing each day to do what they do. National Coaches Day on October the 6th, the 16th is National Bosses Day and School Bus Safety Week begins October 16th through the 20th, thanking our school bus drivers for the work that they do, which again, is very, not very easy. And our National Occupational Therapy Day, thanking our therapists for the work that they do to help support our scholars. Donations from this evening, $3,000 from Sierra Subaru for Piper Elementary to use and any adopt a classroom. $5,000 to Firestone Theater Association for Firestone CLC Theater and then Goodyear Tire and Rubber Company grant for $50,000 for STEM Middle School and High School for their problem-based learning. Had the opportunity to attend Love Akron 13th Annual Awards Event. Very, very nice event featuring our scholars from APS. The, had the opportunity to meet with our Parent Advisory Committee Group and got lots of great suggestions, recommendations from them and lots of good questions that we can use to help move the work forward. The, went over to Jennings for the Cleveland Cavaliers Makerspace and then I also went back again on last week to see Andy and the crew and had a budget discussion with the scholars at Jennings CLC around how can we help support even more what they're doing at the school and all of our schools around STEM. So, it was a very great, great conversation. On Instructional Improvement Day, did have the opportunity to drop in to several of our schools and dropped off a cake to those schools just to say thank you to their staff. Congratulations to Schumacher for being named 23 through 25 National PTA School of Excellence. They are one of 319 PTAs and schools nationwide to earn this designation. Attended the Northeast Ohio ESC Leadership Roundtable. Very interesting conversation. There are many legislative things that are going to be coming down the pipe that will impact Akron Public Schools and all public schools here in the state of Ohio. Attended the National, the NAACP Freedom All-in-Fun Event. Attended the BASSA Conference, the Urban League Annual Gala, which was very nice, the APS Athletic Hall of Fame. It's always interesting to hear the stories and the history from our elder citizens, which I love history. So, it was fascinating to me to learn about all of the things that, and people who were here at some point in time, making Akron Public Schools great. Our district is taking a proactive step to expand senticic alert system. It is something that we're going to be exploring. It is something that certainly board members, I will be bringing to you. We want to try and, we didn't do anything for our elementary schools and so, we want to try and work to see what we can do. Hopefully, we can. The state is actually moving in this direction. That's one of the things that we talked about at the meeting from Senate Bill 313, which is known as Alyssa's Law. That is going to be, being introduced to mandate the panic alert systems in schools. So, we're trying to stay ahead of it and it's something that I know certainly at the time when we were looking at budget, but we, there is no price tag on safety and so, something that we certainly will be looking into. Had the opportunity, as I have been trying to do with all of our unions, OAPSE, which is our local 689, our local 778, AAACP slash OEA, and also had the opportunity to meet with AEA. And so, I have a couple of more to go. We do meet anyway every month. This was a separate meeting and so, we'll be continuing to do that around any concerns that any of our unions have. The next cornerstone meetings will be in November. We're going to be trying to finalize the revisions to the cornerstones, to the Blueprint for Excellence, Strategic Plan. Those dates will be also on the system website. November the 20th on Wednesday at 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock in Room 201, Cornerstone Number Two, Number One, Culture of Safety and Belonging, Cornerstone Four, Family Partners and Partnership and Community Engagement on the 19th. That'll be of November, that'll be at 3:30 and at 5:00. And then Cornerstone Three, Operational Excellence on November the 21st at 5:00. So, I'm letting you know these dates in advance so that you can plan accordingly. And also, around the cornerstone, we are, we do, we do have the finalization meetings, those will be coming up and I'll be sharing those as well so that if you are interested in attending those, once we put it together in draft form, we will come back again so that our families and community can give us further input on the document board before we finalize it. So, Be Kind 330. And also, Mr. Alexander had an opportunity to go to I Promise as well. When they do it, they do it well, so, and I enjoyed it. Couldn't stay long, but I did enjoy it. So, Be Kind 330. As part of the Be Kind 330 Initiative, which continues to emphasize acts of kindness, service, and collaboration, I'm excited to highlight the incredible involvement of our sixth graders from Litchfield CLC at the Akron Marathon. Through our ongoing partnership with the Akron Marathon and the College and Career Academies of Akron Public Schools, 12 of our sixth grade scholars, along with two dedicated teachers, volunteered to run the fluid station right in front of Firestone High School. These students and staff gave up their Saturday morning to help hydrate and support thousands of runners, demonstrating the spirit of giving back to your community, to our community, in a fun and meaningful way. If you take a look at the photo, which is on this screen from the event, you can see just how much fun they had while performing this charitable work. Their efforts not only brought smiles to the marathon participants, but also allowed these young scholars to experience the power of teamwork and generosity. This is exactly the kind of impact we aim to foster with Be Kind 330, encouraging our students, our scholars to be kind, engaged citizens who make a positive difference both in and outside of the classroom. I couldn't be prouder of our scholars and staff. Thank you for living up and living out these values. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Are there any questions on his report? Vice President Jackson?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I was just curious when you began to talk about the Senate Bill 313 and is there, because as I understand it, there are certain federal or state monies that could be available to help to fund school safety, things that we implement for school safety. And so, when I, when you say there's certain budget restraints, I'm curious on our efforts with applying for these funds. And the second part is that, is because I know, you know, you're new, if you know, if they have applied in the past, because I know we spent millions on the metal detectors and things that we came in and that a lot of that money came from the funds that we had, the ESER funds and general funds. I'm just curious and I feel like I maybe asked this before, but I didn't, I don't feel I was, had a clear answer. This is prior to your arrival. I know I asked about this as far as the amount, because I read something, it was a lot of money that seems like it was available for schools to apply for, but I'm wondering how much did we receive, if we received any in that process? If you could give me any insight on that?
So, there, there are federal grants that are out there that we are looking into to see what we would actually qualify for before we even apply for those and if it's even applicable to what we're trying to do. Now, when it comes to the state, there may, may not be funds available when the state determines that it's going to be rolling out its plan, but that's not going to happen for at least another year. Maybe sometimes next, next year when this, when this happens. So, we're just really trying to make sure, because we have our middle schools and high schools, our staff, they have it, but not our elementary schools. So, and I wasn't here, but when it was done, the elementary schools weren't included in that, so we're trying to address that with our elementary schools. So, we are looking into what grant opportunities and Ms. Megan Mannion does a phenomenal job of looking, as I talk with her periodically, but she looks for grants. The last time we spoke, we were looking for grants for safety. So, we are looking right now for that, but we do know that timing and also budget, if those things are not available to us for this purpose, for this, for senticics, then we would need to address that through our own budget. But prior to me coming, I'm not aware of any, any grants or anything that may have been. I'm sure that they probably did, but I was not here. What was purchased, was purchased out of the ESER funds, of which unfortunately, we would love to have more of that money, but we don't. That's, those are the federal dollars for, that was the COVID money that was provided to school systems.
Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, yeah, I understand that. I'm just curious and this can, someone can follow with me later. I want to know, because I know funds were available. I want to know, because I know funds were available for school safety since I've been on this board, but I'm just curious, I just want someone to follow up with me, as I say, I say it on the mic, about the funds that were available, and if we received any, and Superintendent, I understand this predates you.
I know.
If someone could just follow up and tell me, did we apply? Did we receive, because I know some urban districts did.
Yeah.
And if we didn't, because if we have received funds, then, you know, when you receive a grant, you would apply renewal of those funds, and we would know the dollar amount. That's why I'm asking these specific questions.
She would be the one that I would ask.
Thank you.
So, I'll follow up with her, and then I'll follow back up with the board.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I do know that we had $500,000 two years ago when I was COO.
Yeah, he has some information about what we received.
Yeah, so, there's a bit of a gap here between two years ago, when we put in, that was a combination of the metal detectors, as you know, the cameras, sentecics, the bag scanners, all of those things were, were all new, and Dr. Robinson's correct, a large percentage of it was ESER money, but we did apply for all the available grants and did get a safety grant that year for $500,000. So, we, we applied, just like all the other urban schools did, and were pretty much even how they spread the money across the state. So, and I, I do know that Megan has mentioned, I think to both of us at one point or another, that she's working on more grant money as it relates to safety to try to offset some of our, which is now general fund expenditures.
And so, that, that $500,000, is that a renewable, is that, so is that money?
No, it was a one-time grant.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Robinson? Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Next, we have our treasurer's report. Dr. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam President. I believe Ms. Hall asked the question at the last board meeting, I believe, about what happens to the funds that's left in the student account? Did you ask that a question?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Jackson. Okay. And so, the answer, it's, it's governed by Policy 6610. It's in our, in our policy. It's a lot of verbiage here, but it says what, what is most applicable here to your question. All monies accumulated in the account of a specific class or activity will, upon decontinuance of the activity, like a class graduating, for example, be transferred, it could be just a club that stops, too, to be transferred to the respective building public support fund, which we call the O-18. So, the, the actual pattern of, which is controlled generally by the principal, what the pattern is, the money statutorily has to go back into the general fund, and then the general fund does a transfer to the O-18 to match whatever dollars that was. So, it does happen, you know, it's usually not large amounts of money, but, but that does happen, and they, it has to appear on a board agenda to make that transfer.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer, because we have something on the agenda like that right now, to this agenda, about athletic fund that was no longer, and it has to transfer back.
Yeah.
And I just was wondering about the accumulation of the classes, so that it can go for that school towards graduation for the next class.
Yeah, the principal would have the autonomy to make some of those decisions, but that, if it's a Bookdale High School class of 2023 that graduates, and they have $1,400 in their account, it'll be used at, minimally used at Bookdale High School by the, by the principal.
Oh, excellent. Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And the last piece I just want to quickly roll out is Reverend Walker kind of introduced it, that we have the five-year forecast, which is, we're, we're deep into that process right now. So, the timeline that, that I'm recommending is that at our next Finance Committee meeting, which is a bit of a problem, because there are a few of board members and myself that are, will be out of the state during the next scheduled Finance Committee meeting, but I would suggest to you that we need that meeting, and I would like to have that meeting. So, Elise will be working with Mrs. Sykes and whoever else needs to be involved to come up with a different date. So, we, I want to get it in as late as, in October as we can, but I, I would like to get it in in October. The additional challenge with this five-year forecast is we'll be running two forecasts simultaneously, one with a levy passing and one without a levy passing. So, we have to model both of those together. So, we'll model both of those, introduce it, I would like to introduce it at the Finance Committee meeting, then to the whole board at the first board meeting in November, still giving us a couple of weeks, A, to know if the levy passes or not, but one of those two five-year forecasts would appear for board approval at the second board meeting in November, which is required statutorily, has to be turned in by November 30 to ODE. So, but that'll give us some time to see it, give me and Dr. Robinson a time, a chance to work through it, our senior staff to take a look at it. So, those are all, you know, I want to get as many eyes on it as possible, to include our Finance Committee, and then, and then we can go from there, because there are things we can do to impact the five-year forecast if we may, if we wanted to. So, you know, obviously, we don't control revenue, only thing we can control is expenditures, so that could be looked at or not looked at, you know, just what I'll model is what it is, and then we can decide what to do from there. Does that make sense? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Are there any questions for Dr. Thompson? Dr. Mulnar?
Thanks. So, just trying to pull in everything that you said. So, November 25th meeting is when we will approve the five-year forecast?
We would have to, we have to approve it before the 30th, but that would give us two looks at it as a board and give the administration about a month of looking at it. Yes?
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Thompson. President's Report, I'll be brief, as I usually am. I just wanted to thank my colleagues for attending this retreat this past weekend. I found it to be very helpful, meaningful, and I hope we are, continue to be committed to being the best versions of ourselves, and so, I just want to remind you, I think we were all given a document to complete and give to Ruth around our board norm, so, just a reminder to get that into her. Also, I just wanted to mention, and thanks to all of the 20 applicants to fill this board vacancy, very refreshing to see that we have community members who are still, who believe in us and who want to come and serve with us to make us the best district possible. So, thanks to all of those 20 applicants. We couldn't interview all of them. We do have five applicants that we will be interviewing on Tuesday, October the 15th, so we are looking forward to entertaining those interviews and announcing our next board member. And I just want to also mention, I saw a lot of cool pictures of homecoming this past week. Our students look amazing. It's so exciting for them, and so, they look great. Thank you to all of the folks who worked to make these homecomings happen for our students. It's an important part of their, their memories that they have, so. But that is all for my president's report at this time. Next, we will move to committee reports, legal, contracts, and board policy. Dr. Mulnar?
Thank you, Madam President. We have not met since our last meeting, but as we talked about in our last meeting, on tonight's agenda, Section 221, there's a second read on Policy 8660, incidental transportation by private vehicle. This is non-routine incidental transportation. And our next meeting is going to be, is scheduled for 10/28, so the discussion on House Bill 214, Senate Bill 29, independent contractors, and recess.
Thank you, Dr. Mulnar. Any questions? Thank you. Next, Finance and Capital Management, Member Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, members of the committee, as you heard from the treasurer, we have some really exciting times coming up. Finance is exciting. It's exciting. It's exciting, believe me, it's exciting. We've got all kinds of things that we need to do in the midst of a conference, so we will work to try and make sure that we have the date. I'm not sure, normally, finance meets before legal, so the 28th, so I don't know if that date is going to work or not, but Dr. Thompson and I will be looking at those dates, but this is very important, it really is. And I say exciting, because, you know, we're in the midst of a levy, and as Dr. Thompson noted, that we're going to be looking at two different tracks. If the levy passed, if the levy fails, regardless, we have to address it. If the levy passed, then it'll be a little bit easier for Dr. Thompson, for the superintendent, and for this board to come up with a solution. If it does not pass, then it's going to be tough times for this district. It will be very tough time for this district. We have, as you know, a few weeks, a few months ago, had to lay off staff. If we look at a five-year forecast and we find that we do not have the funds, then we are going to definitely have to look at what, what are we going to do? And quite frankly, we will have to cut, and those cuts come from where the money is, and the money is in the staff. Also, North High, building a new school, North High, and so, we had opened doors yesterday, and it was fun to see so many graduates from North High come back and individuals in the community. And so, we, we got, I think, very positive responses from the community, however, you know, that does not mean that it's going to pass. So, if it is not passing, then that would be part of the process into some, determining what is going to happen to North High, but more importantly, what's going to happen to the students at North High. So, these are difficult times. Early voting starts tomorrow, 8:00, 8 until 5, and for the next 22 days. So, I would encourage you, this is our community. This is not the superintendent's community, this is not the board's community, this is our community. So, it is a choice that we have to make. If we make the choice that we do not want to, that we do not want to approve the levy, then unfortunately, this board would have to decide upon what to do next, because we cannot run this district in a deficit. If we run this district in a deficit, then the school, then the state of Ohio will come in, education and workforce, they will come in, and then we may not have a school board or anybody sitting around here, because they will make a decision as to who will run the school then. And the first thing they will say is, because that's what legislation says, we must pass a levy. So, we could decide to pass the levy now, or we can wait until the, till the state comes in and say, pass the levy, but that will get us in a deeper and deeper hole, because it's going to delay passing the levy. This is our community. We have a choice to make. I will make that choice. I will sit here as the finance chair and work with the treasurer and the superintendent and this board to make the choice that we have to make, because we cannot run this district in a deficit. Again, this is not the superintendent's school. This is not this board's school. This is our community, and we have to decide upon what type of community we want. If we don't have a strong, a strong school system, we don't have a strong community. It's just that simple. So, it's your choice, the facts, I'm just giving you the facts. I'm not trying to convince you to do one thing or the other. I'm just giving you the facts, it's your choice. I'll see you at the post tomorrow morning at 7:30 early, be the first in line. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Sykes. Any questions for Finance Committee? Mr. Alexander?
I just want to make a comment, and, and I say this all the time, I don't want to be like Youngstown. I lived in Youngstown, I know what's happening in their school district, I know the board members, that they have no, they'll have no control, and that they have someone else who comes in and tells them, they have a board, but the board is told by the state what to do, and the community has no say-so, the board members have no say-so, you're just a figurehead sitting, sitting in these seats, and they will come in and tell you what to do. So, I don't want that to happen in Akron Public Schools. So, I'm with Mrs. Sykes, and I want to make sure that we do what we need to do to help our school district. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander, and I would ditto all of those comments, and just, if there's anyone who needs more facts, they are on our website, akronschools.com, you can go there and see some pertinent facts, if you want a little bit more detail as to why this levy is on the ballot, so thank you, everyone. Next is Instructional Policy and Student Achievement. Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. We have not met. Our next meeting is scheduled for the 14th, Monday, the 14th, at 4:30, right here in this room. Again, Instructional Policy Committee will be meeting on Monday, the 14th, in this room.
Thank you. Next is Equity Committee. Mr. Alexander?
Thank you, Madam President. We have not met either, but we are scheduled to meet next Tuesday, October the 15th, at 5:15. That's Equity, Equity Committee meeting next Tuesday, October 15th, at 5:15. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister, Ms. Hall? I'm sorry, Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say, in one of our committees, regardless, I'm on the Instructional Policy and Student Achievement and Equity Committee, I know we don't speak on public comment when parents were coming here, but I was that parent, too, right? Not knowing who to talk to, not knowing where to go. I think that's why I ran it second time, to be on the school board. And I would just like to know, at one of our committee meetings, how does a parent handle situations like this, when their child is not being given every opportunity, when there's conflict in the classroom? What are our steps for parents to know? And thank you, Dr. Robinson, for acknowledging, you know, the parents that spoke up and having your staff go out and speak to them, that's big, so thank you for that. But I would just like to know, at one of our committee meetings, how does a parent go about that? And then, let's get that message out to parents to know their rights as a parent when they have issues with the school, with the teacher, with the principal, because again, I was that parent, that had a kindergartner that went through some of these same issues, not knowing who to speak to and got pushed away, as if I wasn't important nor was my child. So, that's what I would ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hall. And I just want to reiterate, Madam Vice President's statement, that anyone in the public can email the board with their concerns and their questions, as well as when they sign up to speak, that's why we ask for their address, et cetera, and information, so that the superintendent's team can circle back and follow up. I know sometimes we don't have those answers in real time, which is one of the reasons why we don't respond. I don't want people to think we're being nasty and rude, but sometimes things aren't just black and white. So, I appreciate your comments and encourage folks to reach out via email to any board member, and we can help direct them, because there is a chain of command, so that they're aware. So, thank you for that. Madam Vice President?
Thank you, and thank you, Member Hall, for bringing that up, because I always, it always is a sense of discomfort, you know, everyone knows I like to talk, and I'd be wishing we could talk directly back, but it's not at, the Policy Committee meetings is not where that would happen. It sounds to me that that parent did follow a command, a chain of command, and I'm glad that someone, that they came down here, because the best way to come, when you follow that command and it's no response, it's right here on this mic, because, and that's why when I start saying, I say it on the mic, because it seem like stuff get to moving, when you say it in the public, open forum. And so, when they follow the process, when they reach out to the school, and then when they reach out to someone downtown, and if they feel like, you know, because people get busy, you have 20,000 kids in the district, and if you're getting multiple emails and multiple concerns, then the best step, and I'm only saying this on the mic for those who are watching, is that once you follow that protocol, then yes, use your right as a citizen, a member of the community, to come and to just bring it up, so that we have a great superintendent, they immediately followed up, and also to email the board. All of our emails are available on the Akron Public School Board website, because we are for you. I love, Member Sykes says it all the time, we are elected officials by the people, for the people, and so, oftentimes, you think when you come to the board, we talked about this, they say, I contacted the board, and they talking about 10 North Main Street, these seven, the six people currently around this, say, we don't know. A lot of times, we do, we have no idea, but the assumption is that we know. So, again, thank you, Member Hall, thank you, Superintendent, Madam President, but yes, contact us once you've gone through that, if it's no resolve, and then we'll try to put you with the right And then, we'll try to put you with the right people, and we can follow up. That's the accountability piece. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next on the agenda is approval of the previous meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the regular board meeting of 9:23, 24?
I make a motion, oh. Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes.
It's been moved by Member Hall. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know if this would be worth amending the minutes, but I do try to have a bit of a call to action in each of my community reflections. So, in our last meeting, I did bring up, again, that I think we should follow the guidance from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce have designated time to demonstrate the learning that's in the classrooms. That's the call to action I was going to finish today when I talked about the great learning, the first grade classroom at Helen Arnold. Also, time to model these classes, say what type of learning is happening and demonstrate to your community where it's happening and really be able to celebrate that and have a place for that. So, it wasn't in the minutes. I don't know if it's worth putting in the minutes, but I wanted to discuss it and give that reminder, especially since I could not add that into my community reflection earlier when I ran out of time. But the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce did say that we should be having demonstrations of model lessons, and I would like to follow that.
So, are you asking that be added to the minutes? Is there an addition or correction to the minutes?
Madam President, if, excuse me, if it was not a part of the last meeting, then it can't go in the meeting now. If we're just, it has to go in maybe next. If this was going to be, at this meeting, it would be in the next meeting minutes. So, you can't go back and change if it wasn't something that was said at that meeting.
Okay. So, it will be noted in the meeting minutes from this meeting. Anything else regarding our minutes? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next is approval of our personnel recommendations. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of the Personnel Recommendations presented in Categories 10 through 20, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Member Sykes. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start this discussion reframing. As legislators, this is a conversation we've had a lot recently. We are the checks and the balances. So, data is a critical aspect of executive oversight and in our role. It doesn't mean there's something wrong. It doesn't mean we don't believe that there's something. It's just we need to have that data. I can give you a list of reasons why I need a new car, but I'm not going to buy a new car right now because I can't. It just, it's not, even though I think I need one, it's not in the cards for me, right? So, with that frame in mind, I saw 10-6, new Director of Strategic Communications. Some of the job descriptions are to establish metrics for effective communication strategies, prepare reports and presentations, media impact, continuously improve communication practices based on feedback and performance data. In our last regular board meeting, there was a position change that was approved due to increased video production. At that time, I requested additional information on the videos that are being produced. What videos are reproducing? Who are the videos going to? How long are the videos? How, how many people watch them? How many clicks do we get? How, once you click on it, how long of the video are people watching? So, in my Google Doc this week, I asked the question, "Could you let me know when this information will be available?" Or, "When the start of this information would be available?" When will the start of information be available? And the response I got is, "We do not have the staff or resources to fulfill your request at this time." What I hear from that response is, based on what my question was, at this time, the administration does not think that you have the resources to tell board members when we will start collecting data or when we will start using a data-driven content strategy for communications or marketing. Not knowing when we will have data or not having a plan for when, a response for when we're going to have data, that's when I become concerned.
Dr. Molnar, do you have a question about something under Personnel?
I do. So, does that mean we're not using a data-driven content strategy for communications and marketing? And as a board member being asked to approve multiple new positions, I think it's fair to know what strategy we're using. We're having a tough financial year. We've riffed and we lost 50 classroom teachers.
Did you state your question, Dr. Molnar?
I will say, I would like to make a motion to table the creation of new positions that don't directly impact students until data can be brought to the board outlining the business case for positions, including 11-2 Multimedia Specialist and 15-1, the Assistant, that I also asked a question about in Friday notes and did not, not only not get a response, but my question wasn't even listed, so other members did not even know I asked the question. So, I would like to table the, make summary, make a motion to pause the addition of new non-student-focused roles from General Fund, including 11-2 and 15-1, until quantitative, quantitative evidence can be offered to board members that supports their creation. This motion would table 11-2 and 15-1 until administration provides a quantitative rationale for new promotions, positions. Also, I was only speaking for a couple of minutes, and a lot of people speak a lot longer without being interrupted.
So, this is a motion within a motion she's made. Is there a second to this secondary motion? Seeing none, it won't, falls from the table. Is there any other discussion under Personnel? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Dr. Molnar.
No on 11-2, no on 15-1, yes on the balance.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Motion carries, well, for items 15.1 and 11.2, they carry 5 to 1. The balance carries 6-0.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of resolutions and motions in the consent agenda. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in Category 25. They are in proper format, and I move for their approval, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
I abstain, so I don't know if me making that motion second is appropriate. But it was quiet on the floor. But I abstain for, from the consent agenda 25.
From the whole, all of it?
No, I'm sorry. 25.1. 24 point, I'm sorry, 24-141.
Those two.
And everything else.
And yes on the balance.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Palmetterian, you didn't answer that question. Should she abstain from?
Well, I made a, a second to the motion. But then I abstained. So, is that appropriate? Or does someone else need to second it?
Technically, if you second, you first or second something, then your vote, you're committed to a yes vote.
Okay, can we do a redo then, please?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you made a motion, and we need a second? No, because I abstain.
A second.
Thank you.
Sykes, thank you.
Sykes is the second. Do we vote again?
Yes.
Yes, we'll have to vote again. Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes, but, okay, let me get this together. I abstain from 25.1 and 24-141, and yes to everything else.
Understood. Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0 on everything except 25.1, 24-141, which is 5-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. Next, we have our Business Affairs Recommendations. Dr. Robinson.
Thank you, President Autry. I wish to recommend the approval of the Business Affairs Recommendations presented in Category 27, please.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve Business Affairs Recommendations?
So moved.
It's been moved by Vice President Jackson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alexander. Is there any discussion around our Business Affairs Recommendations? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Abstain, 27-10, yes on the balance.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention on 27.1, 6-0 on the balance.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. There is no unfinished business. Under Item 30.1 is the new business that this board approved to add to the agenda. And it is a resolution proclaiming the excellent progress of the Akron Public School District and congratulating scholars, staff, and the superintendent. Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
We, what we, what, excuse me, what, what we have done is, we took a vote to put this on the agenda. So, now what she's doing is correct.
Yes. And I can actually read the whole resolution, and then we will entertain a motion to accept it. And the resolution reads, "Whereas the Akron Public School District Board of Education believes that the hard work, progress, and dedication should be publicly recognized. And whereas the board is proud of the progress made by the scholars in the Akron Public School District under the leadership of Superintendent Dr. Robinson. And whereas the board recognizes that the community has recently heard negative stories about Akron Public Schools and wants to highlight the accomplishments of its scholars and staff. And whereas, under Dr. Robinson's leadership, the Akron Public School District has had great success in the following areas. The highest graduation rate component, 88.1% among Ohio's eight largest districts. APS Scholars earning an industry credential is 47.1% compared to 19.5% at the state level. APS Scholars outperform similar districts at the elementary level in six of seven areas. 54% of APS Schools have had, have an overall rating of three stars or above. APS Gap closing improved from two stars to three stars and increased from 27.1% to 22.7%. I'm sorry, I think that's backwards, from 22.7% to 27.1%. APS Reduced Chronic Absenteeism from 47.3% to 44.7%. APS Launched a new all-day pre-kindergarten program. APS Established the Department of Human Capital to uplift and value all employees of the district and to transform the role of human capital as a leader in the centralization of various employment processes for efficiency, economy, and effectiveness. APS Has Fostered Ongoing Community Engagement Through Quarterly Advisory and Cornerstone Meetings, Providing Regular Updates on District Initiatives and Strategic Progress and Ensuring Transparency and Collaboration with Stakeholders. APS Has Established an Internal Equity and Compliance Committee to Promote Fairness and Equity in the Review of All District-Wide Contracts and Financial Decisions. APS Has Experienced an Increase in Student Enrollment for the 2024-25 School Year After Years of Declining Enrollment. APS Has Established Recognition for Principal of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. APS Has Implemented APS Matters, Highlighting and Recognizing the Work Aligned in the Blueprint for Excellence, the Strategic Plan. APS Has Implemented Opportunities for the Community to Engage with District Leaders on a Quarterly Basis to Hear and Give Feedback on the Blueprint for Excellence, the Strategic Plan. APS Believes in Student Voice and Leadership, and the Student Advisory Committee Meets with the Superintendent on a Quarterly Basis. And whereas the Superintendent will soon be providing an update to the community regarding the progress of the schools at the State of the System Address, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District, that the Board hereby formally recognizes and congratulates the scholar, staff, and superintendent on the outstanding progress that has been made under the leadership of Superintendent Dr. Robinson. The Board reaffirms the excellent performance evaluation of the superintendent and encourages him to continue the positive progress and the momentum he has established within the district. The Board invites the staff, scholars, and their families, community members, and local media to hear more about our successes and plans as Superintendent Dr. Robinson State of the System Address on Wednesday, October 30th, 2024. And that is the resolution. We will entertain a motion to accept that resolution. It's been moved by Vice President Jackson. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been seconded by Member Hall. Is there any discussion? Dr. Molnar.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate your ability to use presidential, presidential privilege to add this to new business, especially since I asked for two items to be added to new business of this meeting and was told the majority of the board would, did not want them added to new business. So, I also appreciate you reading the resolution to me. I would have liked to have read it and considered it before the meeting, but there was no notice of this before the meeting. So, because I, although you did read it just now, I've not had time to consider it, and so I must abstain.
Thank you. Are there any other discussion around this resolution? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Abstain.
Mrs. Sykes.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0 with one abstention.
Thank you. And there is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 121.22G1 for the purpose of considering the employment of public employees or officials of the school district. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Alexander. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President Jackson. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Dr. Thompson.
Ms. Jackson.
Yes.
Dr. Molnar.
Yes.
Mrs. Sykes. Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Ms. Autry.
Yes.
Ms. Hall. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. We are recessing at 7:13.